How do we go in and set up these chat? Oh, here we go. Break that one off. You're gonna come in here, right?
I guess so.
God help me.
Who's the first name of the book? He didn't have a name on it.
Yeah, I did. Um, well, I've heard it on there.
Yeah, it don't matter. I'll be there.
I think he's on free. He's the one that was from the city. So he has since quit the city and now working for DOD Network. But he's now excited about the job. One, two, three, four.
There were gonna be some fun minutes tonight.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 and a half. Well, 11 and a quarter.
We're starting him down. There goes my timeline. Forget my timeline.
Shouldn't be any, any issue with Smith. I know I did print it something. I think I'm in the middle of all this whole crap.
How hard is up there?
Uh-uh. Oh, yes, I did. They're old. Those are the ones I got from when Daniel and Ron were supposed to be there.
It'll work. I guess I have chicken in there.
Okay, I'm gonna do.
Did I send your email? I just knew somebody was gonna say, like, you need to pick your header.
You probably are. It'll probably be you know who.
I have to go back to my email next row. Well, that probably won't go a little well.
I'm done. Everybody. And a week. All right.
And when you do mail over, we have nothing set up. What would we put to be set up?
Oh, yeah, Jan, we found it, Jordan. Though we are on.
Should have left alone and I'm not gonna blow it.
They did approve Stuart Ward. I will give you all the. Over here. I need to calm down. Hopefully I'm in the right mood.
Do you think we should, uh?
Nope.
Do you think we should take the meetings that have been recorded and posted to the website?
Maybe. Um, we better record tonight, huh? Then we'll just stop recording. Then can you resume recording?
At the, um, to your tool of Muppet, get over. He's a daddy that got the screen. Screen's all messed. And the moderator just said, we can't see what you're talking about. And then she said that Patty asked her, anybody who wanted to pull their to your tool and, or have her pull to your tool. I was like, that sounds kind of strange. Why would anyone have a pre-opacy as one hand? And I don't know who finally raised their hand and, you know, you can use ours. It wasn't that good. Well, we only said $99.
You think she would have done that beforehand? Well, she sent Julie her to your tool, but she doesn't have August, September populated. She says, oh, you haven't watched Reaching Capacity. It's like, Julie, August, September, not in there. Careful.
I'm gonna try again. And run August numbers. I don't really can do this though, you know. You might have to get that additional.
Oh, you could reply?
Mm-hmm.
Where is everybody? Maybe I better go to the email I sent out. I know this is it. The only meeting that was in there. Nobody's outside, are they? I mean, really?
Let's start. It's, uh, whatever time it is. It's, uh, 5:37. So let's go ahead and start. I call this meeting to order. I don't think there's anybody pictured that's for open forum. So I'm gonna call for a motion on the consent agenda. And I'd like that motion to include a statement that the executive directors' report and financial reports are in great detail. And if anybody would like to read them, they're available.
Madam Chair, so moved. I move that we approve the August 19, 2020 regular meeting minutes. I move that we approve the executive director's report and the approval of financial reports as well as the specific financial reports you referred to.
Thank you. I need a second. Wait here a second. Somebody? One second. Thank you, Ida. Um, and do we have any questions or additions about the minutes or the reports? Joanne? Do you have anything to add to your? We're a little, so we don't always hear what you're saying, so I apologize. It's technology. Joanne, do you have anything to add to your report?
The only thing that I have to add. Oh, here's Jamie, I do believe. Jamie's here.
Yay. Jamie's here. We are reviewing. Jamie, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the detailed reports that we have received. And Joanne has one thing to add to her report. Joanne?
I mentioned in my executive director's report, the webinar that I'll be a panelist in. I'm going to, it's a free webinar, so I'm gonna forward to all of you the link that you can sign up and listen into that if you want to.
Okay. Jamie, did you have any questions about anything we received in the reports?
Um, not at this time, but, um, no, not at this time.
Okay, great. Well, if there's, yes.
Jan, I wondered if on, uh, that first page of the program activity report, is that part of Joanne's report? That first page after a report?
Yes, the program activity reports are part of the director's report.
I wonder if on public housing, if we could have a category along the left side there that says number of vacant units.
There is a place for that at the bottom of that report.
Bottom of?
On the last page of the report, at the very bottom.
It says program waiting lists and vacancies.
Yeah, okay.
See it?
Public housing units vacant?
Okay, 36. And section eight, I don't consider. Those aren't vacancies. Those would be waiting lists. But you say in your report you have wait people on the waiting list, so that's merged. Okay. The title says waiting lists and vacancies, so that's why it was, okay. All right.
See, it says, um, public housing waitlist, all 67. Public housing units vacant, 36. Okay?
We really got nailed about the number of vacancies by HUD. So I want to be sure that we are calling enough attention and, and putting it before our face every month. Okay. Thank you.
I would, I plan to add something as well, and, and that is of the 88 units, 86 at one time or another have had an occupancy. This is very unsettling times in Manhattan. And I know HUD is concerned, and we are concerned as well. But then I look at the number of people who are standing in line trying to get into those units. And I, I think overall, we are doing rather well in a time period which is most unsettling, not only for us, but for the entire country. So, Joanne, I would say, I would, I think we're moving along very well, and I am heartened by the progress.
I think I read that in Joanne's report. Didn't you put that in your report, Joanne? That all of the vacancies in the high-rise at one time or another, except two or three, have been occupied at some point during the last year? Yeah, I saw that somewhere. Just to say, it's there already. Okay, good.
And that's a very important point, especially in, with the rest of the report that we are involved in. And then there's the detailed cover letter on the financial reports.
Can I back up to the vacancies for just a minute?
Sure.
I just wanted to also point out that one of the reasons we got so nailed on those vacancies is because we took them off, the apartment towers units offline. And, I mean, we started taking those offline in 2013. And they could only be offline for three years. And after that time, they start counting them as vacant units. And the way HUD computes vacant units, they don't look at an average monthly vacancy percentage. They look at number of vacant, overall vacant days in a year. And so some of those units have been counting as vacant units for a while.
Even though the building, even though the building was closed and we couldn't put anybody in there.
Exactly.
I do want to, based on our last conversations, I do want to, to say in this meeting that, that that cover page, Jan, that you had, that you just referred to, has been adapted over the years to make sure it addresses the specific items that we ask questions about and that we look for as a board. And so it is important to make sure that, that, that we're acknowledging that in these meetings, as we've talked about, and, and recognizing that we have asked specifically to see these items in, in this format and point it out specifically from the financials.
I would also.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's okay for the minutes to reflect that. And to say that if anybody has questions that are not answered in the minutes, that they should certainly look at our board packets, because the answers to a lot of questions are in our board packets. So thanks, Jamie, for reminding us to say that. If there are no more questions about anything in the consent agenda, yes?
I would also mention on the financials that we did start including some, um, we included, starting this month, I should say, we included some extra pages that give a little extra detail, so that it is crystal clear that those accounts receivables for the section eight and the tax credit program are on those and in the board packet.
I did see that. That, that was an excellent addition.
Thank you.
If there are no further que, Livy? Somebody speaking? Okay. If there are no further questions about the consent agenda, I, I think we should move on, because we have a lot to cover at this meeting. So I call the question.
Jan?
Yes?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yeah.
Ida Jane?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay, so now we're moving to old business. And the first item of old business is an update on COVID-19 operations.
Well, once again, there's not too much to update. We're, we're still just kind of hanging in there and doing what has become our status quo over the last few months. I, I will mention that, um, one of our board members did receive a complaint from a resident that all of the residents are not wearing their masks in the apartment tower when they're in the community room. And, you know, it's, it's, we're not the police. We can't enforce it. And I don't know that we would have any ground to stand on for a lease violation. That's something I probably need to talk to Craig about. I think there's more than she believes there are wearing their masks. But, um, we do have signs up, and I'm looking for some affordable floor signs, like bigger signs to stand in the middle of the floor to say mask required in this area. It's kind of a gray area, because it's, um, it's really not a public area, but it's, it's a public area for the residents, I guess. So, I mean, we'll keep doing what we can do to enforce it. And we have to keep in mind that we do have a lot of disabled people that reside here. And if they have a medical condition, they're exempt from wearing their mask. And, um, we can't get too deep into their medical conditions without crossing some fair housing lines either. So, um, it's kind of a delicate subject, but we're working on it best we can.
So, I, I don't understand, because it would seem to me that the community room is a public area, because people and their guests could be there.
People.
So it seems like.
Can be there, but it's not open to the public to just come and go as they please.
It's still a community area.
I'm sorry?
It's still a community area. It's a community area and it's public for the building.
Yes, it is. And we have signs up that, that they need to wear masks in the common areas. We have them on every floor. We have them on the entrance doors. So, I guess I. I probably need to talk with Craig a little more about, um, how far we can go with enforcement.
Could you also talk to maybe like some equivalent agencies like Metalark or other places that might have similar issues? And see if they've already done some of that research or already know what they're, what they can do in that regard?
Or I may just call Julie out of the health department or her, um, can't remember what they're tied with.
Okay. I, I, and I, and then there's also just talking to the individual in question.
Yeah.
Personally.
And we, we have talked to some about it.
Okay. Is it possible to lock the room again?
It is. We would have to install a lock on the, um, well, on the wooden doors that come out into the lobby. There's no lock on those doors. We've never have locked those doors, but we can. And I know some housing authorities have locked down their community rooms. And the only thing tenants would be missing out on is their vending machines. And, and as well as, um, some of them come down and use the microwave to heat up their meals or something, but.
So I have a suggestion. Put a little note on, in everybody's mailbox or on everybody's door that if there continues to be a problem with people not wearing their masks, that you're gonna have to do that. And maybe just the threat of doing that will get people to comply.
That's a good idea. And, um, you know, even if we lock the community room, that doesn't solve the area of the elevators and the mailboxes and the vestibules. So, I mean, we need to address it all.
Okay. Um, and other question? Because we can go on. We're done.
Go ahead.
I just feel like we have so much to do that we should resolve quickly. Rental assistance demonstration update. Joanne?
We had our last technical assistance call on, I don't remember the date exactly. It's in my report, I believe.
Couple weeks ago.
A couple weeks ago. And Kennedy and Linda did sit in on that. And we really didn't have too much to talk to. The request for proposals for the needs assessment had been sent out. There have been a couple of addendums sent out to that, just with potential proposers asking questions. And one was a typo correction, and one was adding Flint Hill's Place to that proposal as the technical assistance consultant felt like, since we do have opportunity for first right of refusal on that property, should we decide to reposition it at some point? We should have that needs assessment handy. And, um, it can be paid for with a subsidy that we get for Flint Hill's Place. So it'll, it won't be at a cost to, uh, to Manhattan Housing Authority. And so we did send out an addendum to add Flint Hill's Place to that. So, other than that, those proposals are due on September 25th. I do need some volunteers to sit in on a evaluation committee. If anybody wants to volunteer.
Is it gonna be virtual? Will it be? Will it be virtual?
It can be.
Would you email a request to all of us, so we can check our calendars and figure it out?
I sure will. I wouldn't anticipate meeting before, um, before the 28th of September, because they're not due till 2:00 in the afternoon on the 25th. So, and probably maybe a day or two after that, because we'll have to get them all scanned and send out, sent out to everybody for evaluation. But I believe our next call is on the 28th. Our next technical assistance call. No, it is on the, oh, they haven't sent out an invite. I believe it was on the 28th of September. And, um, not looking for answers of if we award or who we award to, but just to kind of see how many responses we, we got. Based on the number of inquiries we've had, we also advertised it on the National NARO website. Most of the companies that would be interested are all over the country. So based on the number of inquiries we've gotten and responses, asking questions, et cetera, I would say we're probably gonna have a good selection to choose from. There were about 15, 17, I believe, um, sent out to individually, to various contractors, so.
And so you said probably the calls on the 28th? What time of the day would it be?
I will send you the invite. I believe it's at 10:00, but I don't think they've even sent me the invite for it yet.
Okay. Time was the last one. She said it was the same time. That's what I remember.
And I believe that was at 10:00.
10:00, I think. The city commission is not gonna meet that week, so I would like to review the proposals.
Okay. I am looking for on my calendar, last time we met.
I think it'll be educational.
Well, I will send it out. I believe it's at 10:00.
Okay. 1:00? It's not good for me. Okay. And Joanne, you sent us a document about RAD 2 tonight, this afternoon, didn't you? Jo, Linda asked you something and you sent it. So everybody has a document that you should have received late. So everybody has a document that you should have received late this afternoon that you could look at as well.
The request for-
Okay.
Is what I sent out. Yeah, the RFP.
Okay. All right. Are we done with that? Everybody good? Okay. See, under all business, discussion of public housing agency recovery sustainability FARS assessment results and determinations. You want to tell me what that is?
That's this letter that we're responding to HUD to.
Okay.
And at the September 9th meeting, you all had asked me to prepare a timeline. And I've gotten started on it. And I sent it out even later this afternoon than the RFP, I think. But it is far from complete. It's been a bit of a crazy week. But I will, I continue to work on it. I mean, there's a lot of milestones that have yet to be added to that. Linda did send me some things that she wanted to see included, and those absolutely will be included. But it's far from a complete document. I just wanted you to be able to look at it and see if I was on the right track of what it is you are looking for.
Anybody got a comment? Linda had followed up with a list of other things to add. And I would suggest that Joanne probably knew that, but that's a good list, Linda. Is everybody, is everybody happy with the way she's proceeding?
Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to look at it in depth since it was sent this afternoon. But, but in general, it looks like, you know, it's, it's meeting what we had asked for, at least for our purposes. And then for an actual follow-up response, I think we'll have to kind of look at it closer and understand fully if we're answering everything and giving the picture we want.
Kennedy, what do you think?
Don't we need to have it finished by the time we finish the letter back to HUD? Wasn't that why we-
Yeah, this is going to go, this will go with a letter, but we, we're not near that point yet. This is, there's too much stuff in that nasty letter that we got-
Yeah, exactly.
To rush to answer it. So, I mean, you know, we have toilets overflowing and all kinds of things going on in the buildings as well as- responding to this.
Do we want to meet again in a special meeting?
Kennedy?
To talk about that?
Yes, we will need to, we will need to schedule another special meeting. I'm still looking for comments from Libby or Kennedy on, on the beginning of the timeline that Joanne sent us.
By the way, at the top of that document-
unmuted.
The header-
I mean, it looks like a good start. I know, I know there's a lot more that needs to go into it. But I think the format is great and easy to understand and clear without being overwhelming.
I'm in agreement with all the comments and, yeah.
Do we want to break? Pardon? Do we want to talk right now about scheduling that next special meeting before we leave this item?
We can wait and see.
It's Wednesday that gives you another week.
It's not something that's going to get put on the back burner, but do we want to wait so closer to see when I'm actually able to send out the completed document and then make sure everybody has a couple of days to at least read and absorb the information in it and schedule a special meeting at that time?
What if we do a special meeting at like the top of October sometime? Would that be enough time? Or do you not think that that would be enough time for you to-
I think that'll be enough.
My Zoom just said-
So if we did it like about the same time, I mean, we've already notified them to tell them, hey, we're going to get back to you. So if we do it at the beginning of October, kind of about the same time we had this September special meeting, would that be enough time for you to complete it? That way we all kind of have a schedule going forward and it gives you, and if you for some reason get stuck, then maybe we can alter that date, but-
Yeah. Yes, Kennedy, I, I would anticipate being done with it prior to then. So, but it would be good to have the, that, that time to be able to put into it. And I'm okay with scheduling something at, at the beginning of October. The latter, letting them know that I had sent out for comments prior. I think I sent it to everybody after it was completed and it has been sent to HUD so they know we're responding. And so, I mean, that part's been done, so they're expecting our response.
Yeah, and they have to send that letter through 30 people before anyway. We've already sent, so we have time. Nothing moves quickly at HUD.
Was there any response or acknowledgement of receipt of that letter at all?
No, the only acknowledgement I got was when I spoke with our financial analyst on the phone one day. He and I briefly talked about it and I did tell him, as I told our portfolio manager, that they would be getting a response.
It's my, my, it keeps shutting down, so I apologize. I have a question. Do we want to wait until the first Wednesday? Are we here? I, do we want to wait till October 7th before we have a special meeting? Or do we want to do it on September 30th? Is anybody there?
I don't know if, and Joanne, I asked for your input on this. I would like to know if there's any reason or push that we would want to respond to them before 30 days of receipt. I mean, is there anything that would, is there any benefit? Is there any timeline that would be reasonable that we should make sure we get a response back to them? Because if we don't meet until 30 days after we met previously, then that's already a full month from when we received the letter, a month plus one week. And then if it's another week after that before we actually finalize it and get it sent back to them, we're looking at a month and a half response time. What's, what's reasonable? What's an expectation?
Excuse me. I, I, I don't, there's no timeline. I mean, they have not requested anything from us in that letter. They have, and the ball's really in their court. They said they were going to schedule a meeting with us. I think that in HUD time, 30 days is probably reasonable or 45 days.
But in order for you to do that, I think we should meet on the 30th and not wait till the 7th because that gives us another week to still work on it if we're not, if we don't feel like we- if we don't have enough stuff.
What are your thoughts, Joanne? I can see your face.
I can't tell if you're there because I keep fading, Jamie. Okay, good. Because every once in a while, it just totally shuts down and I have to restart it. Jamie, what do you think of that?
I don't think there's a problem with getting this document done by the 30th and to you in time to, it may not be a week ahead of time, but getting, you know, it out to you at least a couple of days ahead of time to read and absorb before the 30th. So, I mean, I, it's doable on, on my end.
What are the, what are the issues that we might see arise from this? Like, we've already talked about some of the concerns about people outside of the housing authority being, receiving this letter. Look, what are some of the other downsides of us not having a quick remedy to this if there was a remedy to be had? So like what, what potentially is at risk if we aren't prompt?
Jamie, I, I don't really know how to answer that because this is a whole new process to us as it is to all of you.
Specifically, do we lose any potential funding? Do we receive any penalty issues that might cost us anything?
At this time, I don't think so. But I can call and have that conversation with our financial person. As I was telling you when Jen came back on, you know, when I spoke with him, we agreed that there was no, no timeline that the board needed to respond. And he said, you know, he sent me an email and said, you know, I read that letter and the board doesn't have to respond. And I said, I know they don't have to, but they want to. And he emailed back and said, well, that's, that's their right. That's perfectly understandable. So even if HUD has contacted us for a, for a meeting or not, I don't think it's going to happen in 30 days to begin with. And even if they do contact us and don't have the letter out, we don't have the letter out between the time that they contact us and the time they actually schedule the meeting. I think it's, I don't think it's significant.
Joanne, just for clarity, is the, is HUD much like other government entities where if they are going to decrease your funding, you would receive a letter with that notification first?
Well, generally, yes. Yes, generally.
I have a question. Now that I'm back, can we ask them two things? Who wrote the document and who are the 30 people that saw this whole thing?
I, I can't-
Because I-
I haven't talked with Fran Cleary yet, and those may be questions for her. But Fran's a very hard person to get a hold of too. So-
Because I think if we propose those two questions while we're preparing our document, that gives us some extra time leeway. Because they need to answer our question.
I don't know that we want extra time, though. It's our, our reputation and our, we have the risk here of the time. They, they get nothing, like, they have no reason to expedite this or to move it along. It's our reputation that gets hurt by this not getting remedied. And as we discussed in the last meeting, the, the issue is the vagueness of their, of their letter. It's the fact that it came out of the blue without having any indication before we received that letter of, of what was going to be in it or what was being criticized. And even the vagueness in terms of us not being able to fully understand how to respond because everything is so unquantified and vague in the letter. So to me, it seems like we have a, an issue where they have no reason to rush this. Like, they, they don't. We're troubled. We're a problem for them and there's no reason for them to change it. And it feels like that is what they want. And so I feel like if we sit back and wait for them, if we sit back on our heels and wait, that we're going to be waiting and waiting and waiting. And the next thing you know, they're going to come in and say, yeah, you didn't fix this. You didn't do anything.
Not, I'm not suggesting that we should wait. I'm just suggesting that while we're working on it, we have a right to know who our accusers are and who agreed to it.
Well, I think Frances is kind of taking responsibility for that because she was the one that signed the primary letter. And as the director, she's saying like this, like she gave permission for her signature to be on that. I, I, I don't know that they would even bother responding to that. But we should be aware of that because for them, it's probably not of significance. And yes, I agree that it is, it would be nice to know, but I don't know that we can look forward to that information.
And I don't know that all 30 people that it went through were authors of the letter. Some of them may have just been reviewers of the letter, so.
To me, that just adds, consistently adds to the level of unprofessional, like how unprofessional this whole thing has been is the fact that that was also divulged to us that it went through 30 people who all didn't actually need to approve it before it was sent out to us, compiled with the vagueness and everything else that we're dealing with. So to me, it feels very much like we need to respond before they forget that they even did it and before somebody just washes their hand of the ownership of it.
Absolutely.
I, I agree.
One thing I want to point out is the reason I, I have figured out the reason Phil did not get the letter is for, in, in the HUD online systems, we have to put all of our board members' names, addresses, phone numbers and email addresses in there and their terms. And I went in there and looked and Phil was not in there. But I think maybe the reason is because he was just reappointed and his, his term had expired. So I, I'm guessing the system automatically dropped him off of the list of commissioners, but I have corrected it. So there, there was a, I'll say legitimate reason because that's the system they use to send out their letters, so. But there was no, I was in there twice, so there was no reason they didn't copy me.
Okay, so-
Linda has a question.
So I think we all agree we need to pursue this as quickly as possible, but we need to do a good job of it. Do we want to meet on the 23rd, the 30th, or the 7th for another special meeting to discuss it?
I, I like the 30th because if nothing else, Joanne will have more. And if she needs more time after that to compile more, then we're kind of in the middle ground at 30th.
Yeah, the 23rd is not a good option here.
I agree with the 30th. I think, I think the 30th.
And no pressure. If you have a bunch of other stuff going on and you don't get it all back by the 30th, it's really a good start.
Yeah, everybody's kind of cutting it out right now.
Linda, what were you saying?
I would like for us to push on. I think the September 30th date is reasonable. And it's been, that'll be three weeks from when we got it and three weeks practically from, or when we met. And I think it's important that we get a move on because the next thing that will happen is they will call and say, okay, we're ready to meet. I want them to already have our letter by the time our board meets with the HUD officials. You know what it's like when you don't respond fast enough and the project moves on without you and you haven't even had a chance to have your say. I object to being unjustly accused as a board. And I think we need a strong rebuttal.
I agree.
That's what I think.
I'd like to add one other thing, and that is that the only signature on that document was Cleary's. And I want to know if she was aware of what went on, what went out to us under her name or if somebody else did it. I think it's very important that we get a hold of her.
I, I think Joanne has a good enough relationship with Frances to have a conversation with her. Am I right, Joanne?
Yeah.
Joanne, who is the financial analyst? Is that this Daniel Sumile?
No, Daniel Sumile, he was our portfolio manager. And he's since moved on to a different department. And now it's Patty Bennett, who, or Patricia Bennett, I think her email says, where the, that's who sent the letter out. So, but I mean, she's not new to HUD. She's been at HUD for 10 years.
So she's the financial analyst that, that you've been talking to?
No, she's the portfolio manager. So she's more of the management kind of person. Ron Snyder is our financial analyst.
Okay. And so how does he factor in, who does he report to? So I guess what I'm saying is in your conversations with, with him, do those conversations go beyond him? I mean, I guess, how is that working?
Yeah, I think it depends on what the conversation is. He reports, I believe he reports to the Assistant Director of Public Housing, don't quote me. I think he reports to her, who is just Julie Miles, and she reports to Fran. I think he reports to her, who is Julie Miles, and she reports to Fran. Unless he reports directly to Fran now, I'm not sure.
And you're still having weekly meetings? Like, that's a weekly scheduled meeting?
No, uh-uh, no. We send our financials to him monthly, and he sends reports. He plugs the numbers from our financials in and gives us an estimated financial score every month. And that's, that's who on the, while you weren't on the call. But on the call in March, that the commissioner set in on, who said, you know, you guys have already made up like 11 of the number of points that you need to get, but.
I remember you addressing that. And is that kind of information included in the timeline here? And is that, because that's the thing to me where there's discrepancies between those monthly or weekly, however off, monthly conversations and the, and the trajectory that we were receiving and reporting to us from those conversations versus the response in this letter. And that's something I think we really need to hone in on, like hugely. Because if in March they were saying that our financial score had improved by 11 points, and I remember you giving us that information, I think a couple times throughout. If that was the information we were receiving and then at the end of this review, we're worse off than what we were when we're actually improving, that's the piece we really need to hone in on. Why were they giving us positive information if that's not what was observed?
Yeah, those, the reports that he gave us did talk about the use of the public housing monies to fund the Section 8 activities and the managed properties. So, I mean, it's something, it's something we've talked about, I won't say monthly, but on more than one occasion. And so, I mean, it's recognized in those reports. And I can start sending those reports to you as they come to us. The spreadsheets he sends may be a bit confusing to some of you, but the narrative that he sends with it might be helpful. But I would, I will include those with the document. I'm, any document that I reference in this timeline that I'm giving that hasn't already been provided to you, I will include it with the timeline.
I think it would be helpful to have the one that preceded that letter. From Ron Snyder, then, his monthly report to narrative and finances to you that would have taken place prior to whoever she is, Francis Clary, sending the letter. There might be some clues there.
The thing that you need to keep in mind is, and I'll send those to you, and I have no problem with that. But keep in mind that the letter is mostly, the letter that they sent us, talking about the financials as of the end of 2018. I still don't know where they got, well, we won't go there, I don't know where they got their information, but. So, you know what? Those spreadsheets and those narratives that he's been sending us only started this year sometime.
So wait, when we talked last week, the discussion was that you were told that it was going to be through 2018, but then in actuality, it was through 2020. So what, did we get confirmation on what the exam or the audit, what it actually covered?
No, the letter itself actually says it's for the fiscal year ending 2018. I think the discussion last week was that a lot of things have changed since fiscal year end, December 31st of 2018, and things are looking up for us. And that they claimed to have done this FARS review between December something and March 17th. And number one, nobody was ever on site. Number two, they referenced policies that either didn't exist or needed to be reviewed and revised. And we didn't send any policies to them until the most recent review request, which was on July 24th, and we didn't send them to them till August 24th. And that, it took me five emails to send the load of documents. So I know that they had not reserved, well, even the policies that they'd asked for were not, some of them were not included in those documents. And so nobody's reviewed the rent collection policy, the eviction policy, or the maintenance plan to know what it does or does not include. So I think that was the conversation, that the review was to have taken place between the end of 2019 and March of 2020. But the review was supposed to have been for fiscal year 2018. And then the phone calls that we did have, the remote visits, were supposed, they led us kind of down a different path, asking us to prepare a recovery plan and take it to the board and have it reviewed and submitted, and.
No, the review, the letter says that it was, the assessment was between December 17th of 2019 and March 17th of 2020. And it was, the December 31st, 2018 is based on, that was when we received the troubled assessment. That was our REACT score. That's the only reference to 2018 was the REACT score when we were initially deemed troubled. But the review was between December 2019 and March 2020. So I don't think it was based on that financial or that fiscal year end.
Of 2018, yes. That's our, I mean, again, this is part of their vagueness in their letter, but.
But I don't think it's vague. I think they're acknowledging the troubled status, but it, but the review wasn't. They weren't reviewing us based on 2018 financials, I don't believe, from this. I think they're reviewing us based on current. And that shows in the fact that they point blank talk about things that have happened since then. I mean, they point out specific things like the city grant and 20, I mean, all these things that happened after 2018 are acknowledged in here. So it doesn't fit. They're just acknowledging the date of our troubled status, which was the December 2018 date.
Well, the city grant happened in 2017. But the, the troubled status for fiscal year ending 2018 is what triggered this review, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but, and I agree with you there, but what I'm saying is, the review wasn't as a, and I, what I'm asking, not saying, what I'm asking is, this doesn't read to me like the review was based on our December 2018 financials. It reads like it was based on recent financials, but as a result of our 2018 designation.
Good question, because I've been operating on the assumption that the review, although they're reviewing the current financial statements, I mean, when the financial analyst reviews our statements, he's reviewing our current ones. And the information we sent in for that review was current information. So you may be right, but, you know, based on our understanding of all of this, because when we have had conversations, our remote meetings, it's all been, yeah, you know, this was 2018, and we know you guys are working to move forward and doing this, this, and this. It's led us to believe it was a result of the 2018 information, but the things that had happened after are not necessarily being taken into consideration. We thought they were till we got this letter.
I do think before we respond, we need to make sure we know that. And I don't know who you would ask that of, if that can go through Ron or if that is the question that you need to specifically ask to Francis.
That would be a good question to ask, because, I mean, you make some good points.
I just don't know how we would respond to it without knowing what the, I mean, it's part of the issue right here is that the fact that after receiving this letter, after a review, we still don't know, that we still don't know the dates that they were reviewing. So that in itself is part of the vagueness that we're running into and the issue we're running into. But before we respond, if we overwhelm them with information about a period they weren't even looking at, then we will have wasted all that time.
You're right. I will ask for clarification on it.
Okay, so we're set to have our next special meeting on Wednesday, September 30th at 5:30. How strongly do we feel about being in person versus being on Zoom?
Or we could do a hybrid.
Or a hybrid.
I think we can do a hybrid, and that way.
We're all covered.
We're all covered. And it also gives us the opportunity to maintain some level of privacy unless the public wants to come into the building and participate.
Okay, so it'll be a hybrid meeting. People who are comfortable with being there will come, and people who would rather not take that risk will not. And Joanne will set it up for us. I thought the way you set it up when, last week, was excellent. I thought that the TV viewing screen was very good and so forth.
Thank Mandy for that.
It's good to have a techie.
Yes, I am.
Right. Have we asked all the questions we need to ask about this right now? Then I'm going to move on to new business. I think that these fair market rents and payment standards are a standard thing that we do. Does anybody need further clarification? And I'm going to ask for.
I'll put it on the, I'll make a motion and.
Thank you, Bill.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 91620-A, adopting the revised fair market rents and payment standards for Riley and Potawatomi Counties effective October 1, 2020.
Need a second?
I second the motion, but I have a question.
Okay, that's fine. Now's a good time to ask.
Exactly, yes. These are the rates that HUD has given us, and we have no discretion. Is that correct, Joanne?
We can adjust the fair market rents down to 90%. Well, anywhere between 90 and 110% of the fair market rents that they issue to set our payment standards.
So currently, we're looking at 100 and above. And so for, is that what I'm reading correctly in that table? That our percent, that we're basing it off of is 100, 107, and 110% based on the bedroom size?
Yes, and that's still, for some of them, going down. Making the payment standards go down. And what happens when you allow those payment standards to drop is people sometimes have a harder time finding units to lease in the Section 8 program, which affects our success rate with the Section 8 program, so.
Because the market units don't fit into that box that we're set?
Yep. And so, you know, in years where they have, where the fair market rents have increased, we have stayed closer to just 100% of the fair market rents as the payment standards. But now that they've decreased, and we're getting ready to issue some vouchers, we want to make sure that we're able to get those people out on the streets and future vouchers as well. So, and what'll happen with people who are on the program, this will not affect them until their second annual recertification after these are adopted, which could mean that they end up paying a little bit more because the payment standards have gone down. But generally, in the past, what's happened, when the payment standards have dropped, by the time their annual recertification comes around, HUD will have issued two new sets of payment standards, and they've usually gone back up to where they were. So those people on the program are not affected as much.
And I, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, I am very supportive of keeping the rates as low as possible for the tenants, but I'm also concerned about the financial health of this organization. And so I'm glad we're not, at least not dropping below 100%. So, because I know you can. But, so I think this is a fine plan.
Yeah. Just as a little piece of education, the concerns that are listed in the letter that we just discussed in the last item are the administrative fees. And the way we earn our administrative fees are per voucher that is leased up per month. So if the administrative fee that HUD has issued is, say, $50, then for every voucher that we have leased up in a month, on the first of the month, we get $50. And then you times that, times 12, and that's the money we have to operate with. The trick in that is that it fluctuates up and down, how many are leased up. And then Congress doesn't, you know, if Congress only funds you at 82% of that $50, that's that much less that you have to work with. So just a little educational piece there.
Additionally, for education purposes, I know we've asked this in the past, so this might be redundant, but we talk about what the basis is for the fair market rents that we're utilizing. And it says in here that the Department of Housing that HUD sets that. Do you feel that that, do we feel that that represents our area, our market, that those fair market rent values that they're providing to us? Or can you tell us a little bit more and speak on that?
It's hard to know because we're in a, we're now in a Metropolitan Service Area, or MSA, and we have been probably for the last, I don't know, six, seven years. So now that includes Potawatomi and Gary Counties. So I think a lot depends on what area the landlords are in that they're calling and polling about how much their rents are. And I think a lot depends on, you know, the market at the time because we have found some landlords more willing to negotiate down on their rent. And I think there's a lot of factors that factor in there. And then, you know, when they look at the vacancy rates in the areas, they have their little formula and their little calculation that they do to come up with these. So, and then we don't know if they're polling, you know, private landlords or tax credit units or throwing tax credit rents that are protected in there. And so without knowing exactly who they're polling, it's hard to say how accurate they are. But I'm always surprised when they go down.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Now.
Call for the question.
Call the question. Jan?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ida Jane?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie? Hey, and the next item similarly is something that we do frequently.
I'll put a motion on the floor if it's appropriate.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you.
I move that staff recommends the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 91620-B, adopting the revised flat rents in order to remain in compliance with the provisions of federal regulations. Additionally, staff recommends the approval of Resolution Number 91620-B be considered an amendment to the admissions and continued occupancy policy.
Second. Need a second? Linda, second. Are there any questions? No questions? We're good to go. Then I call the question. Jan?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ida Jane?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Joanne, what do you have to do to put us into executive session?
I have to create your chat room and have you all move, I think I have to move you into the chat room.
Okay, so I need a motion first, right?
Yes.
Okay, need a motion to go into executive session and-
Not the chat room, the breakout room.
Is 7:15 long enough, do you think, that'll give us 35 minutes? Is that okay with everybody?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session until 7:15 PM for the purpose of discussing matters of non-elected personnel.
All right, Jan? Second. Somebody?
Livy, second.
Okay. Jane?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Ida Jane?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Joanne, do your magic.
Okay, first I'm going to stop recording.